The broadcast is now starting. All attendees are in listen-only mode.
All right. Good afternoon. Welcome to the June 15, 2020 Planning Commission Workshop. The purpose of this workshop is to allow the planning commission to meet with staff to review and discuss items listed on the agenda. No official action will be taken at this workshop. All participants in the meeting will be muted to minimize feedback in the audio. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves and turn on their camera to indicate that they would like to speak. You can also send the chat to Melissa if you would prefer to recognize, to be recognized that way. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the record. And our first item will be residential plan to RP2 land use study. Mary Ann, you're muted.
That would help. Is that better? Can you hear me? So I'll start over. Mary Ann Abrahamson, Planning Commission Staff. Good evening. So we are here tonight to discuss the RP2 future land use study. We have briefed the planning commissioners about this twice, once in March and in May, where we discussed the public outreach portion of the study and the steps that we have taken so far to garner public input in this process. Tonight, we have Jared Schneider here with us from Kimley Horn. He is the consultant, the project manager for, on the consultant side for this study. And he will be discussing the proposed policy recommendations going forward and hope to get any feedback from you that used to fit. So I will note that on Thursday, the 18th, Thursday of this week, we will have a public virtual work session. The same materials will be discussed on Thursday. That is being held from 6:00 to 7:30 via go-to webinar. And that is for the public to receive any input from them. Those materials have been uploaded to the project webpage. They were uploaded on the 11th of this month, so folks have been able to review those documents. Sorry, here's some feedback. There we go. For anyone listening who might be an attendee on Thursday, we recommend you register ahead of time for that, although it's not a requirement, but it's always nice to check to see if your computers are compatible with go-to webinar ahead of time. Otherwise, you can call in to the meeting on Thursday. So with that, I'll hand it over to Jared to get started.
Thanks so much, Mary Ann. Mary Ann, can you see my screen with the presentation cover? I just want to make sure I'm showing the right one.
Yes.
Great. Well, thank you so much. Love technology, right? This is a different world we're in. Again, Jared Schneider with Kimley Horn Associates. Thanks so much for having, having us today. Really excited to talk about what we've been up to in the last month or so since Mary Ann last briefed you, as she mentioned. We're going to talk about what we've heard and kind of where we've been and then how we've addressed some of the concerns that we've heard from the community and then go over our recommendations. And then we've got time for Q and A as well. So what we're talking about here is really the area within kind of this pinkish color that's within the BOMM community plan. And the BOMM community plan is identified in this purple area. So you can see, we're also looking at other areas of RP2 that are outside of the BOMM community plan in this yellowish color. And on the legend, we've called that the RP2 North Subplan area. And then this pink area, the RP2 South Subplan area, which there's also a portion that's within the Sun City Center Community Plan. So we'll get into this in a little bit more detail, but this is really primarily what's in the pink has been our focus area. So again, Mary Ann did a great job of talking about this, our overview. Really, we've been talking about what's the vision of development look like in this, this community, evaluating the comp plan policies and land development changes that, or that are out there in the books today, and then reviewing infrastructure needs in BOMM. Again, let me back up one sec. Really, the moratorium really was in effect for this area in the pink. So that's, that's why we've been specifically looking at the policies and the regulations that impact this area. But also, we understand they're going to impact other areas, other RP2 areas. So what we've been up to, our schedule, Mary Ann's hit on this a little bit already. We started in March with developing some of our initial land analysis. We started in, in March with our first public workshop, which if you can imagine that, that was in person. I think that was right before everything changed. We, we kind of pivoted a little bit and did an online survey and an online community work session in April. And then we're, we're targeting the stakeholder work session later this week as a virtual online setup. And then we've also had stakeholder workshops that we've been doing as well on the phone. And then that's driven us to kind of our policy recommendations and updates. So right now, we've got some initial drafts of policy changes and the comprehensive plan. And then also have been working on land development code changes. So just a little bit of background on our land analysis to give you some context. This red area is, is again, kind of our, our focus area, what we're calling the South Plan area. And so when we start to look at, it's good to try to understand what's, what's out there today, what's left to be developed. So what is the impact really? So what I said here is 14% of that area is really, it's ELAP, so it's protected today. And what we mean by ELAP is land acquired for preservation. There's also this brown color that has approved ELAP land. So it could be, what that means is it meets requirements. It could become ELAP and preserved land, but it's, it has not been acquired at this point. And we also showed for not only our little, you know, focus area here, but for all of the RP2 areas, how much of it's preserved, and that comes out to around 8%. So it's good just to kind of understand what, you know, what, what are the restrictions and what's developable. And so then we took that a step further and we showed, you know, within our focus area, what's already approved development, what's got development on it, which in other words, other words are non-vacant. And then the green is really what to kind of key in on. It's the vacant developable land that's out there. So these blue stripes are approved land, green is vacant developable land. So that's 19% of the focus area. Again, this kind of area here, here in red is made up of approved developments. And almost a third of the entire area of RP2 is made up of approved development. This is just a chart summarizing those details that I just went over. So now I want to transition a little bit into what we've heard from the community. I know Mary Ann's mentioned this in the past with some of the other briefings. I, I talked a little bit about this. We started with our community open house, March 11. We've had several online surveys. We've had stakeholder calls and meetings, really trying to understand the issues from the community. So this is just a graphic, what we call a word cloud on the left is, we asked the community at the first work session, what do you think of the area today? What, what's your vision for the area? So these, these words get bigger as we've had, you know, larger instances of that comment. So you can see traffic problems congested, you know, overcrowded came up as area today. And then managed traffic, that was something that came up quite a bit on the vision for the area. This is a survey that we, that we end up doing. And really, we just asked, you know, what, what would you like to see improved in the community, or improved rather? And protection of wildlife, discouraging the suburban development pattern came up as a top two. And infrastructure was a big one. Really, the suburban pattern, those 40-foot lots is something that we continue to hear from the community that we're not in favor of. So this is again, kind of getting into the survey of what we've heard. Some of the main themes were the rural feeling, the green space, larger, larger lots, and a different mixture of residential agriculture. We also asked the community, what are some, some other areas that they like? So Fishhawk Rural West Chase came up on the top. So real quick, I just want to summarize some of the stakeholder interviews and really had some really good input from the community. The development community, we reached out to some of the things that we heard over and over again were the issues with the current commercial requirements, feel like they don't work today. With planned villages being placed, put in place 30 years ago, that, that's where there really was not any commercial out in this area. So the feeling was needed to have kind of a self-sustainable commercial square footage to support development. So that, that was a comment that came up over and over again. Design guidelines came up as well. Just more predictable development was the key theme there. The community brought up several key points. Again, infrastructure is a big one. We can't say that enough. The substandard roadways have an example here that we're showing, roadways without shoulders. Really, the big portion of the comments we received were the density calculations. Really, the community would like not to see anything greater than two dwelling units per acre. Clustering was an issue. Really, the feeling was you shouldn't be able to allow development site. And we look at a gross acre where there's wetlands. They'd like to see that undevelopable land netted out, which we're encouraging right now in clustering. So that's, that's one of the key topics that we're trying to balance right now in our recommendations. Preserving green space and setbacks, that was a big conversation as well. So now I'm going to transition into how we address the concerns. And I'm going to go over these pretty quickly and then get into the recommendations in more detail. So strengthening the rural character, we built in in our recommendations, additional buffering requirements. We talked about design standards. So how do we look at that, continue that character that BOMM has? A lot of the, the larger lot comment, it seems to stem around the repetitive suburban, again, 40-foot lots. So we're trying to instill within design guidance, how do we have different housing styles, sizes? And that also allows different opportunities for, for folks with different incomes or abilities or, or different preferences. Preserving the open space, again, that was a big one. So we're encouraging additional dedication of open space. Really trying to get, get policies in there that talk about encouraging farming for available and related businesses. This one I should note, so we have recommendations that are part of this plan. These are, many of these are follow-up recommendations that aren't addressed in our plan, but we, we brought them out there because they were continued discussion topics. Developing a mobility plan for the entire area to look at how roadways stitch together in this area, school siting. The last one, last bullet here, where I'm talking about allow developer credits for external infrastructure. A lot of that's being addressed with mobility fees and is outside of this study. Just wanted to make that clear. Again, revising the commercial requirements came up again and again. So we, we did revise those commercial requirements and allowed for community benefits and replace of commercial requirements. So now let me transition into a little bit more detail. We're providing a number of tables here, and if you look at this, these are, these recommendations are defined by timing. We put some initial thoughts there. Were immediates upon adoption of the plan. Short terms, within four years, and mid to long term could be over four years. So really, everything we're talking about in the plan goes directly to the comprehensive plan, and that's the planned villages section that we're looking at. So really, we looked at consolidating the policies. There's been some confusion. Clarifying the policies, that was really a, you know, a first step. And then really re-categorizing the planned villages. I'll go into this in more detail, but looking at defining a north and a south area that we, that we showed on that map previously. Updating clustering, again, I think this is something that needs a little bit more discussion on, on Thursday as well and what that means. So we allowed for different, or encourage different home sizes, lot sizes. Then we updated the commercial component, like I mentioned, and design standards again is a big one. This table gets into the specifics of the land development code. So just making sure that, you know, obviously, you know, any of the policies updated in the comprehensive plan line up to the land development code. We talked about, again, hitting on community benefits to replace the commercial component. And really, what we're working on now is getting into the, you know, the real details of design standards. So including, you know, walkability, buffering. And, you know, that was something that we heard quite a bit of. Folks just, again, having that, that idea, the realistic development, what, what does that look like? Or, or an idea of, you know, what, what are the rules that are out there? So that's, that's really what we kind of focused on. Something we talked about was creating a checklist to require optional design standards. So I thought that was, was a good idea. And then we said, remove the planned village graphic. What it, what is in the land development code today is a, you know, graphic that has the commercial component in the middle and then homes around it. And well, that's a good, you know, that's a good idea. We really felt like that's something, again, from 30 years ago. That's, it's kind of changed the dynamic because there's commercial nodes that are out there today. So again, there's some other recommendations that we heard from, from our, our stakeholder interviews and other ideas that we had that we, we didn't want to lose, but they're outside of the study. So we did identify those. Some of the examples were school civic uses, citing, that, that's got to be something that happens kind of continuously. I'm just going to hit on a few of these, but further discussing public safety concerns. We heard that from the community on some of the borough pits. ELAP, coordinating that, it's going to take some time, but we talked about connecting ELAP areas, preserved areas that are north and south of the RP2 focus area. So that, that's something we want to continue to kind of encourage and explore. The last table here on the recommendations, really, again, these are just comments that we, we had going through the process. Time and time again, we talked about a mobility plan in this area. You know, it's something in the, in the past, we've, we've said, we're not going to plan for the area, but we, we feel like a really, you know, detailed study of kind of those road connections, multimodal connections throughout the area is a must. You know, exploring other kind of TECO easements. And I know Taryn on WBR2 is going to talk about that as well, but how do we connect to, well, MAMA and then Fishhawk North of BOMM? So that's something we want to continue to look at. We've had a number of discussions on other revenue sources. So whether that's a TIF, MSTU, MSBU, I think that's going to be a continued discussion. Obviously, the mobility fees has been, been a discussion area. We put affordable housing in here, continue to discuss affordable housing. From, from all of our discussions, we've heard about affordable housing, but it hasn't been a key, you know, a key item that's been brought up as far as a priority. So really, we haven't promoted any, any kind of density bonuses for affordable housing. It has been something that's, that we've heard, but again, it wasn't something that, you know, has been brought up in multiple stakeholder meetings. So want to hear more about that and talk a little bit more about that. Something longer term too, we talked about our more robust architectural rural standards. That's something that's been done around the country in certain kind of rural communities. So we felt like that's something that could, could be addressed. So now I'm going to dive in a little bit more into some of those key recommendations for the comprehensive plan and the land development code. I'm going to talk about these in a little bit more detail. I showed this graphic earlier. What we talked about was really treating within the comprehensive plan, LDCs, a north and a south area. So we've got, again, the pink area, what we're calling RP2 South Subplanting Area. And the north is the North Subplanting Area. So really, what we looked at, addressing different design standards or more robust design standards in different areas. There's also different acreage requirements. And for planned villages, you could go from 50 to 160 acres on the north area, whereas we said in the south area, you had to have 160 acres. So it just gets a little bit more detailed for the planned villages here. We also talked about transfer development rights. That's something that's been discussed in the county quite a bit, especially South County. So that, that South Planting Area, I was, I was showing you, what we talked about was making that a ascending area. And we've got this kind of defined here. And what we mean by that is, you know, TDR is the whole premise is to preserve land in sending areas while allowing landowners to be compensated. So this is a really, TRs are very challenging. And I know this is going to be a continued discussion and the county, again, the county's looking at it. But we started to frame again, how, how could that south area be ascending area? And then the north area could be a receiving area. So I've hit on this already, but really what we did with the updated standards and providing a little bit more detail here is replacing the commercial standards with community benefits. So in our kind of draft, we've looked at land dedication is key. So that still allows opportunity for commercial. So it would be land dedication or a town center, multimodal connections to commercial or other infrastructure improvements that are in existing commercial areas. Or the BOMM community plan mentioned a BOMM downtown. So those could be infrastructure improvements nearby in that, within that area. Land dedication for uses that would provide job creation, but also help with kind of that, you know, that farming community background that we've talked about, rather through community gardens, smaller farming lots, and then also land dedication for office uses. So the biggest thing that we've heard is just the, you know, a lot of times land is being dedicated or commercials being built and it's not being utilized. So this allows still the opportunity for commercial to be built by a specific commercial developer. Community bonuses, we did, our community benefits, we talked about density bonuses for providing a range of, of these community benefits. And again, this is, we're trying to strike a balance here where you could get to, a bump from two dwelling units for gross acre to three, providing a range of community benefits to really get at that rural character. So providing different housing types and sizes, additional open space, we set up to 50%. So again, we'll need to talk about that a little bit further. You know, looking at dedicating land for ELAP, additional off-site infrastructure. So that could be something outside of the BOMM area. A lot of the infrastructure improvements that we've heard about or concerns are not only in BOMM. They're, you know, folks from the community trying to get to, to the interstate. So it's a Big Ben, County Road 672, those type of things. So again, providing options here, we talked about green, sustainable building patterns and then rural architectural style for buildings as well. We also hit on the buffering requirements. So if you can't meet the 250 feet buffering requirement, then there's a range of other things you have to do. And then again, talking about the multimodal access circulation. So that's really, I know I went through that pretty quickly. That's, that's really kind of the meat, you know, summary of what's been changed. We've got a, just a quick survey on, on the website right now to allow folks to ask us questions prior to the work session that's on Thursday. And then obviously, we'll be answering questions throughout the session. So that's out there live and Mary Ann J and staff have placed all of our, you know, all the material out there on the website. And so with that, we'll take any questions. Thank you for your time.
All right. Are there any questions from commissioners? I guess I should state that since this is a non-action item, we will, we won't be taking any questions from the public at this moment. I will have Mary Ann mention again later on at the end of this, when we will be taking, when and where and how we will be taking input from the public on this. But for now, it's just going to be questions and discussions from the commissioners. So I will open it up to my fellow commissioners, anyone who wants to be recognized. I see Commissioner Powell already. But I don't hear him just yet.
Hello, now, can you hear me?
There you go. You got you.
Yep.
Horizon guy here. Um, great presentation. Thank you so much. I, a few things that came to my mind. Maybe this is better for, for Melissa, but are the consultants working on like the corresponding changes to the land development code?
Sure. Yes, we sure are.
Okay. One thing that I kind of have a problem with is that, you know, the current plan, it really seems kind of like it leaves out like the little guy, you know, where you don't seem to get any, you know, density, additional density for, you know, less than 160 acres. And so I just don't really understand, like, what would need to be done to, you know, to achieve that? You know, and why that number was plucked out?
Yeah, it's definitely something we'll continue to have discussions on, Commissioner Powell. We talked about the, the north side and the south side. We were, we were trying to be, you know, really cognizant of the conversations that we've heard from the community right now. I know that in the past, there's been a minimum of 50 acres. So it's definitely something we're still considering and talking about.
Okay. And then on the transferable development rights, I mean, do we actually think that's going to work? I mean, don't these programs tend to be a little bit more difficult to administer?
These are very difficult programs. TDRs are challenging. So again, the county's talking about it right now. I think it's, it's not easy. I'll just say that. I think there's some steps longer term that we could, could do to shape that a little bit. You know, mitigation is something that's been discussed. Yeah, I think it's going to need some continued discussion.
Okay. I will let someone else speak. I don't want to dominate. So no, I may have something else. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, but I can't hear you.
Yeah, we can't hear you, Commissioner Joseph, at the moment.
How about now?
Yes.
Now I hear you.
There you go, Commissioner Green. Sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Jared, for the, for the presentation. You know, I'm still trying to play catch up with, with what's going on with this, with this, with this effort. And I guess I sort of, you know, started to, you know, to, to focus on a little bit, little bit after things were already in motion. So forgive me if I ask some questions that are pretty basic or fundamental to what, what this effort was really all about. But, but I guess that my first question has to do with, with the, the RP2 land use designation and the, and the actual development pattern, the potential development pattern that, that's, you know, that this would, that this would generate. This is, this is, this is still pretty low density. Two, two dwelling units per gross acre is sort of a basis or base. And, and then with, with certain, under certain conditions, let's say, that, that can be increased to two, possibly up to four, four, four units per acre.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. And this primarily, I was looking at Google Earth to try to understand what's, what's, what's there along 672. But, but this is all primarily agricultural land, at least on the north side of BOMM Road, let's say.
Correct. Correct. Yep. That is correct, Commissioner Green.
Okay. So, so, and I'm going to go back to question Commissioner Powell just, just asked about the, the 160 as a sort of a magic number. And now when I look at this, there are large, large tracts of land, possibly several that are, you know, in excess of 160 acres, let's say. But, but the, but the intent is to, is to change the land use designation for, for, for all this agricultural land so that it would yield So that would yield this type of development pattern is, you know, two dwell units per, 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 is that per gross, gross acre?
That's correct. That's per gross acre. Yep.
If I, if I could just add that this land use category has been in place for, for quite some time since the early 90s, I believe. And at one point, this area was all within the urban service area. When the urban service area was first created and DCA said, the Department of Community Affairs said, no, that's, that's too much. You've over allocated land for future growth. And as I understand it, the compromise position was that this RP2 category was created with the idea that it would create these self-sustaining villages outside the urban service area. And the 160 acre was put in there. That's the equivalent of a quarter of a section, section township and range. So that was, there's no other magic to that number than that, that I know of. And so, but what we've seen and what the community has expressed, as Jared shared, is that the, the development hasn't necessarily been in a manner that has been as self-sustaining as it was once envisioned to sort of be these isolated villages. 160 acres probably wasn't enough to really create that. So the, the pattern that's emerged is not quite what I think was envisioned when it was first put in place in the 90s.
It's a good background, Melissa. Yep.
Okay. So the, now the part that I'm still struggling with though is the, the village concept and, and, and the, you know, the, the density designation, let's say, you know, for, I, I can certainly envision what that would look like. In my development pattern, but, but the village, the village portion, and if we're talking about several large villages, let's say, in this area. Is the, is the intent that, that somehow they would, would, if, if develop, you know, in this manner, that somehow they would, they would be connected or, or, or create some, you know, or, or contribute to a larger sort of village. Where does the village part come into this?
Trent.
How does it materialize? Okay.
Commissioner Green, sorry, you broke up on me a little bit. So I'll, I'll, I'll speak and answer that a little bit and just, just interrupt me if I'm not answering your question. I, I think you're, you're trying to formulate how, where does the planned village component come in from? You know, we talked, Melissa did a great job talking about the background, the 160 acres. I, I think what we, what we're trying to do, and I think I know where your head's at, where two dwelling units per acre does not make a village. The density is not there to support it. Is that kind of where you're going? With that comment?
Yes. Yes.
So we're trying to utilize what's already been out there or what's been in place, but then simplify it and not have these smaller villages, as Melissa said. When this was set up in the 80s and 90s before, there was a DCA compromise. So that's where we put a, a one larger south village area and one larger north village area. And again, I, you know, whether this changes or not, I'll, I'll clarify that we put 160 acres and above, you could get two dwelling units per gross acre. And if you were adjacent and you had some other, you're under 160 acres and you were adjacent and you had some, some sort of contribution to a planned village. This planned village, then you could also do 12, two dwelling units per acre. Then we tried to ratchet it up. Obviously, we're trying to balance the community's concerns and that they don't want to increase densities. So we're allowing up to three dwelling units for gross acre. If you give some sort of community benefits for in certain case, for dwellings for gross acre in certain areas. But again, this comes down to much higher density when you cluster and, and do, you know, open space and you could get up to five to six dwelling units per acre net. I think that's still a discussion that needs to happen, right? Because I think the community would like to see density only on net. And, you know, the example that's always given, right? If you have 100, 100 acres and 50 of its well-ins, you shouldn't be allowed to do 200 units. You should base it off of those 50 units. That makes sense. So that's still the discussion we're having, but we were trying to simplify that discussion and really, as Melissa said, not get hung up necessarily in the 160 acres. And then from a, you know, community benefits, talking about a, a village is really still allowing those mix of uses and dedicating land for it, but now requiring a residential developer to build out commercial development that they know nothing about or they don't, that's not their wheelhouse. So it's still creating the same pattern with the possible mix of uses and then interconnected system of streets, multimodal connections. And that comes into the design guidance piece. So that's a long-winded response, Commissioner Green. I, I don't think any of it's perfect, but we're trying to strike that balance, if you will.
Okay. But, but essentially it allows those other use that, 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 that are, that are more village-like or, or uses that can contribute to a village, village-type development patterns, let's say.
Correct. Correct. Yep. So you could have community gathering spaces, allow commercial in certain areas.
Hey, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green.
Right? Any other commissioners? Everybody can hear me? Just checking. Anyone else? I had a couple in the interim here. See if anybody pops up in a second. Couple comments on this overall. I thought the RP2 stuff here was pretty good. I had similar questions as Commissioners Green and Powell on the 160 thing. And I also echo Commissioner Green's sentiment on the haziness of the village descriptions, but I'll get into that on our next one in more detail. Obviously, this one has a lot more work ahead of it before it catches up to the other one, a little bit more work at least. So I'm sure their sentiments will be taken into consideration there. Some of the things I did like about this, besides obviously overall, I think it's a good effort. The 50% open space that I noticed in this one, I think it's higher than, than what we see in the WV2. I noted that. I like that a lot. One thing that I thought was missing overall from this presentation, and it seemed like a little bit from the research, although it's, it's obviously there, it's just not stated, is direct ties to the community plan for the area. I spent a lot of time looking back through the bomb community plan. And I think that anything we do in this area has to speak to the bomb community plan. One thing that I wanted to mention specifically is a reference in the bomb community plan to the fact that the community of bomb encourages Hillsborough County to try and get some sort of infrastructure down there. Now, we all know what's going on with the infrastructure situation. We don't handle that. It's another department, right? But I noted in our documents, as we move forward here, the revisions, we're kind of making this statement that Hillsborough County is, is taking our hands off. We're saying this is all the developer stuff. And I felt that that statement is in direct, right? Direct conflict with the community plan and what it states in the community plan about what the community wants for infrastructure. So as we go forward with this, I would make a strong suggestion to staff and the consultants to get that community plan and look at what the community wanted and make sure that that is echoed in these changes. Or it's not going to be an easy way going forward through these changes. You know what I mean? That's, I think that's a very key thing as we go forward with it. Other little things, I had 100 little things. I think those are my top most important things. I'm scrolling through here. Um, one other thing I wanted to mention in this area of the plan, because I kind of thought about these two, the RP2 and the WV2 is two areas. And this seemed to me more like the area that felt like it wanted to become more natural in the future. And just even if it doesn't, in respect to both areas, since we're talking about, you know, keeping environmental lands and keeping things agricultural and rural. I'd like to see more of a focus when we talk about roads and we talk about areas, especially the agricultural areas. We do a good job of it when we're trying to talk about the small villages and towns. But when we start to talk about the agricultural areas and rural areas that we're going to keep, we kind of just say, yeah, there's going to be agricultural and there's going to be rural, but we don't talk about, okay, well, what, what does infrastructure for an agricultural roadway, what does that mean? Because that's different from the roadway that's going to be in the village, right? And I think as the planning agency for this community, we have to incorporate all those kinds of things in these documents, right? Development services can met out what these things physically become, but our vision for this area has to incorporate that broad of a kind of view. And I, I don't kind of get that just yet in this document. Again, I acknowledge that it's still, still a work in progress. I'm, I'm sure I'll see that coming forward, but those were kind of my big ideas. And LID, I wanted to throw a, a shot in there for LID as we start to talk about potential things we can do with hydrology and water in the area. If we're keeping environment and we're keeping, you know, agricultural land, sustainability and LID is a natural fit for all that. And we have those chapters and things working in the planning commission now. So those are some of the big things I just wanted to mention there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And another check out there to see if anyone had any more questions, any of my fellow commissioners, any more comments on this one, RP2? Going once. All right. I guess I will thank you for your time and I think it was a great presentation. Oh, do we have someone?
Yeah. It looks like Commissioner Dickerson has something she'd like to state.
Okay. Go ahead. Commissioner Dickerson, please feel free to go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. Um, so I just wanted for the greater group I, to know, I did talk to the consultants about school needs in this area and also road infrastructure needs. So just so all the other commissioners are aware, we're really struggling with finding school sites that have sufficient roadways to house schools. So not only will we have one infrastructure issue, we may have two, or we actually already have two. So that's one of the big challenges that we're facing and it all comes down to money. So I'm really interested to see kind of what happens with all of those funding sources that you mentioned, Jared, in the future.
Thank you.
Hey Nigel, it's Mitch. Can you hear me?
Hey, yes, Commissioner Brewer.
Hey, I apologize. I have some technical problems. So I will, I missed the beginning. I'll make certain that I re-watch it. And if I have any questions, I'll get them to Melissa or Jared. But I'm sure you did a good job. I just want to apologize for, had some issues getting on, but.
No problem.
No problem.
Alrighty, was there anyone else who wanted to ask any questions or make any comments on the RP2? Anyone out there, Melissa? Nope. All right, Mr. Schneider, I'll thank you for a great presentation and your time. And Ms. Abramson, if you wanted to mention, take a moment to mention again how and when the public can comment on all this, if they would like to.
Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And thank you for all of your very valuable comments. So for the public, we will be holding, again, if you missed the, the beginning of this meeting, we'll be holding a public work session this Thursday, the 18th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM via GoToWebinar. So the presentation will be the same. And all of the backup materials are on the project webpage, so people can read through the proposed policy changes of the comprehensive plan. Both a clean version and a strike-through underlying version. And we strongly encourage that if anyone would like to attend, they register beforehand. So we have sent an email to everybody on the constant contact email list for this project with the information of how to register ahead of time. But feel free to contact me if you did not get that information. It's also on the project webpage. And Jared, if you could go to the last slide here, just so you can bring that up on the screen. One more time for folks. Here we go. So feel free to contact me if you have any questions on how to register. If you are not accessing via a computer, you can always call in as well. That is an option and all of that information as well as in the, the website. And again, let me know if anybody has any, any questions on that. And in that, I will add that there will be a Q and A with the consultants. So the public will be able to ask questions. You can also email me questions ahead of time or enter them into the survey link that is on the webpage and we'll be sure to answer those questions on Thursday.
Sounds good. Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have our Wy Mama Village Residential 2, WVR2 Land Use Study and Community Plan Update presentation.
Good evening, Commissioners. Tatiana Gonzalez, Planning Commission staff. Here to introduce Ms. Taryn Sabia, who's from the Florida Center for Community Design and Research at the University of South Florida. She's the consultant on the Wy Mama Village Residential 2 Land Use Study and Community Plan Update. And she'll be briefing you all today on the findings and recommendations from the study resulting from the initial community input we received during public outreach. But before she begins, I want to let everyone know that Planning Commission staff will be hosting a virtual work session as well for the Wy Mama community this Wednesday, the 17th, from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. And the session will provide the public an opportunity to comment on the materials being presented today and to ask questions directly of staff and the consultant team. The materials are available right now on the Wy Mama project page on the Planning Commission website and the public is welcome to contact staff via phone or email to provide comments before the work session this Wednesday. With that, I'll turn it over to Taryn.
Unmute Taryn, please. All right, Taryn, did you unmute yourself?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Gotcha.
All right, perfect. Thanks, everyone. Sorry about that. And I will go ahead and share my screen. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. Excellent. Thanks so much, Commissioners. Again, I'm Taryn Sabia with the Florida Center for Community Design and Research, and we are working on the Wy Mama Community Plan Update and the WVR2 Land Use Study. So I'm going to, or a few key objectives. I know that you've been getting updates along the way in our process. And you do have a full slide deck for the presentation that we are going to do during our open house this Wednesday. It's about 60 slides long. I am not going to make you sit through 60 slides this evening. We will do just a condensed version of the same presentation. And I will be happy to answer any questions that you have about that presentation. So for a few of the key objectives in looking at the Wy Mama Community Plan Update, we reviewed the previous plan that was done in the mid 2000s. And we also went over the WVR2 language as it is in the future land use and are also looking at the livable communities component within the comprehensive plan. So those are the major pieces that we've done. We've done a community-wide charrette, which was in the very beginning of March. So we were lucky enough to be able to be in the community for a few days to get their input and to really get a feel for Wy Mama during that time before everyone went into quarantine. So a few key objectives that we have, and I really want to just call attention to these and you'll see them throughout the plan and we were using these to help guide us through the process. And these are things that came from the outreach and the feedback from the community. So create urban and community design strategies that enhance mobility, establish a network of connected amenities. The community is very interested in safer walking, biking, public transit, and for children to be able to walk and bike to school safely. Articulate a distinct vision and character for Wy Mama. This is something that's important. Articulate a distinct vision and character for Wy Mama, this is something that's important to them in terms of identity. Defining and enhance the place-like qualities of the community. So really helping that culture of Wy Mama shine, having a visual image that is present and looking at the public realm conditions, focusing again on walking and biking and those pedestrian amenities. Revitalizing Wy Mama's downtown, leveraging infrastructure improvements to do it. We've heard a lot of concerns about the lack of certain types of infrastructure currently, but also looking to include multifamily housing and regular farmers markets as something that really does help bring Wy Mama together. Create opportunities for strengthening the community's access to jobs and education as well as access to the rest of the region. And support entrepreneurship and local business development. We think there's a lot of opportunity for that in Wy Mama particularly because of the scale. Additionally, they want to leverage the area's proximity to the local farms and the farming community and strengthen the area's cultural attributes. And really to bring that into the economic diversity of the area, create opportunities for enhancing wellness through the public realm, safer streets and access to healthcare and healthy foods. Maintain the diversity within Wy Mama that's currently there, maintain affordability. So much of the community feels that Wy Mama is currently affordable and they would like to see it stay that way. Ensure that the final Wy Mama Village Community Plan communicates a framework for sustainable and coordinated community development. Leverage new development to support existing amenities and desired increases for retail in the downtown. So as we see new areas develop within the WVR2, understanding that there's a relationship between the WVR2 and downtown Wy Mama, how do they benefit each other? How can we leverage that new development to really help downtown Wy Mama revitalize and flourish and become a benefit to everyone within the Wy Mama area? Encourage workforce and affordable housing. And you'll see that we are looking at policy to help expand workforce and affordable housing both in the WVR2 and downtown Wy Mama. Establish partnerships with Hillsborough County School District to create joint uses of facilities for libraries, computer labs, and recreation fields. We have heard this expressed a number of times from the community and parents and adopt policies that will help achieve the community plan, including zoning and land development regulations for Wy Mama's downtown and the WVR2. So these are all going to be highlighted in my next slides. Strong focus on health equity resilience and sustainability, these are some of the guiding principles that we've built in based on the needs that we see in Wy Mama. Health is an essential benefit and the residents are in need of it. A great deal of the community does not have access to healthcare and we think that this is going to be an important component in the future as well as the walking, biking, and safer streets piece. Equity, we heard about Wy Mama looking to maintain its affordability, the need for affordable housing, you'll see, and looking to grow in a way that is more equitable and equitable for the existing residents as well as new residents. Resilience, looking at the capacity of Wy Mama to change, absorb shock, and be able to reorganize and to be able to sustain its community identity as it goes not only through this process but over the next 10 years and 20 years and after. And sustainability refers to the long-term health of the community and being able to really look at how the concept can plan for the well-being and future of the area. So looking at equity indicators, and I won't go over these in detail, but we really wanted, you know, the community to know that we heard them in terms of looking at economic vitality and understanding, you know, how the community is going to grow, looking at readiness in the region and for the future, and skilled labor and as well as education, and looking at connectedness, which has a lot to do with where people are living and working and how they're getting to and from. It also has a bit to do with being housing, housing cost burdened and such. So some of the mapping that we've done, and this is just a representative piece of it, but looking at the urban service boundary area in Wy Mama, there's the area at the center. It's kind of like a half of Donut. And the middle is the existing downtown as well as another residential area surrounded by the WVR2 and then bordered by the rural lands that are within the Wy Mama boundary area. We have the protected land map and then also showing Tico and Hillsborough County-owned properties that are existing within the current boundary. This one was really key in understanding future development and housing, what that mix should look like and how do we get density right? So looking at housing units and typologies, when we look at the percentage of mobile homes in this area, it is, it's a big concern. They're providing affordability, but they're not providing a sustainable home. Most of Wy Mama does not need to evacuate in the event of a hurricane, just a small component in the southern portion, except that these mobile homes do have to evacuate. So if we can find safe, sustainable, affordable housing replacements for this, it would really be an asset to not only the residents in this area but to the county overall in terms of looking at emergency management. So critical needs, again, health, housing, and creating opportunity. And these are, again, some of the principles that we're bringing into the urban design framework for the overall community plan and the vision. Which is in order to secure the participation of the community's diverse population in its economic growth, contribute to its readiness for the future, and connect its assets and natural resources, the Wy Mama Community Plan focuses on health, equity, resilience, and sustainability. The community-wide approach celebrates Wy Mama's agricultural heritage, rural natural resources, local businesses, cultural legacy, and small-town character. As Wy Mama grows, the community envisions an affordable, walkable community connected by a network of trails with thriving local businesses and farmers markets along a porch-like main street. A community which is safe and welcoming to residents and businesses with access to educational opportunities and healthcare. The elements addressed in the district-wide urban design framework, mobility, form and character, environment and open space, and cultural capital and community function to create an integrated approach to community revitalization and development. Implementation of the plan will ensure a future for Wy Mama where residents can prosper and visitors can share in the vitality of a small town with a lot to offer. So their current slogan is "A Small Town With A Lot To Offer." We think that that is something that they can really keep and begin to focus on. These are the four key areas that we are building the urban design framework from and looking at the community-wide approach. So mobility, really focusing on circulation, transportation hierarchy, streets networks, trail and bike networks, the pedestrian realm, and transit. Forming character, we're looking overall at the entire community plan. We do have a focus area on downtown, but zoning, infrastructure, scale, and looking at the scale of parcels, small-town downtown districts, main street, the WVR2, and housing and building types. Looking at environment and open space, so conservation, parks and recreation, low-impact design, agriculture, and then beginning to talk about cultural capital and community. So create a place to be in a gateway to welcome people to Wy Mama. We have a focus on schools, shared resources, and the social component of the community. So for the policy updates, what you'll see is the future land use element, so residential growth density, it's an incentive to increase for affordable and workforce housing, employment and service requirements. This is something that is not currently working in terms of its numbers. It's under review to update with the findings that we're waiting on from the market study. As the market study is completed, this will be integrated into those findings. Possible decrease in square footage as appropriate for the commercial square footage requirement and the possibility of looking at other mechanisms to encourage or provide economic development, employment through developer contributions or both. Transfer of development rights, you heard Jared talk a little bit about this. We have narrowed it a bit. We are looking at establishing a receiving zone within the urban service boundary and particularly focused on the main street core area of downtown. And we're looking to be able to transfer development from the WVR2 to encourage the higher density numbers to be within the urban service boundary. In the land development code, we're creating a land development code for the WVR2 and for Wy Mama downtown. We have an urban-to-rural transect as part of looking at Wy Mama. And you can see, these are the areas that we're looking at everything from, you know, the beginning at the rural, moving this way, the neighborhood for the WVR2 and its density, and looking at how we begin to grow in density as we reach the downtown core. We're proposing a regulating plan, you can see it here. One of the key aspects of the plan is looking at some of the bikeways and connections, but also the street network and the grid patterns even within the WVR2. So that way, as the area develops and developers begin to look at their overall planning strategies for these areas, we are encouraging that street network, it's within the land development code proposal and wanting to maintain circulation. A key piece is the extension of Bishop, which is just south of the urban service boundary, to provide another east-west connection between 301 and 579, which I'll point out on another map. So looking at circulation, again, the street classifications and the bicycle facilities, these are key components. There's a number of residents in the area who are transportation disadvantaged. We think that the walking and biking would provide a way for people to get to and from work and to and from those necessary amenities that right now they really can't access due to safety issues of walking and biking. The area is, in terms of its distance and walkability, in terms of the size of it, it's actually quite walkable. What makes it not walkable is its lack of infrastructure and the disconnectedness in between. So we're looking at complete streets, we have a series of street sections, we're just going to show one example here. And so we're looking at ways to be able to incorporate sidewalks and street lighting to create more of a pedestrian realm along the street corridors and to incorporate enough space where we can have the transit circulator enter into the downtown grid. Looking at a transportation hierarchy for the area and really establishing the hierarchy, the pedestrian realm being the first and foremost component of that transit, then the automobile and bicycle facilities. And so looking at how we begin to really create these in a way that is going to really set a transition in the community. So some of our greenway examples, one of the strong regulating lines is the Tico easement. It connects all the way from the areas within the WVR2 through downtown Wy Mama, all the way up to the RP2 areas in Palm. And it would be a really excellent way to connect new development with the downtown, with the older development, and be able to give everyone a safe way to move from place to place within Wy Mama without a vehicle. And a little graphic here of the downtown bicycle network showing how we're envisioning it, and you can see all the way on the right-hand side of your screen, that is the easement line, that strong diagonal with the arrows at the ends. And so that really provides a tremendous opportunity in whether the easement is usable or if we can at least create a network adjacent to it. Now, in terms of the pedestrian realm, you know, looking at creating walkable neighborhoods that encourage the 10,000-step-a-day lifestyle. We think that this is a key piece. We think in a small town with a rural character, this is something that can certainly be accomplished and creating more destinations along those walking paths. Places of rest, places of recreation, places of interest, places of work. Transit, so this is an example of the circulator. We know that Wy Mama has been looking at a circulator, that Heart has been considering it, and so this is a proposed route for that circulator to be able to operate and hit enough points within the downtown. So that the idea overall is that it comes and it circles in downtown Wy Mama and then it heads back just through Sun City Center and Ruskin. So this is building off of an existing idea, but we wanted to give it a little bit of a formality in terms of where we thought it would be best suited. So forming character, you know, Wy Mama is known for its rural landscapes nestled around a town center and we really want to be able to focus on that. So you can see the Wy Mama Welcome Center in the rendering here. One of the things that we heard from residents is they would love for Wy Mama to be the gateway to the regional park system, for people to be able to, you know, come and find natural recreation resources, you know, by way of Wy Mama. So this is something that we looked at creating and keeping as part of the overall character. We also have a series of these, and again, this is just one example in terms of looking at building and lot types. We have charts, these are within the land development code components, different building types, setbacks and lots, where you'll find them within the transect components. And then we have separated overall Wy Mama into different districts. And again, this is not the regulating plan. This is so that we could have a better understanding of what the development opportunities were and what the limitations were in different areas or segments of Wy Mama, because the WVR2 is a really large area. So understanding kind of where those things fall into place. So with District 1 and District 2, there are a lot of natural lands there, there's also some agriculture. And so looking at these areas, one of the things that I believe our recommendations are going to show is the advantages of agri-hoods in these areas and how development could be used as a buffer between the downtown and agricultural land and then the rural lands. So being able to really integrate those and as well as having options to be able to use the transfer of development rights to transfer those rights into the downtown receiving zone. This is, again, looking at the environment, open space and parks, so the WVR2 here, with the goal of being able to restore the watershed quality. A lot of these elap lands that are within this area have to do with being able to serve as recharge areas. And so that is an important function and being able to see where those areas are and balance that out with development will be a key piece. And this is a, you know, we, I kept the slide in, it's a photo from the area, but development areas within the WVR2 will be required to maintain 40% open space. So it's not the 50% that Jared spoke about, but we are looking at additional densities in this area clustered more tightly and clustered near the urban areas so that that 40% is 30% contiguous and serves as a buffer to the rural area and 10% would be utilized in the interior of the development for interior park spaces and trail connections so that we can, again, really get that. So that we can again, really get that bicycle network going and get people connected in and through their neighborhoods. So this is a proposed idea on a piece of county-owned property. Again, looking for both passive and active recreation opportunities. We had heard from the community, there was an interest in access to the lake. Most of the property around the lake is private. And because of that, there's limited opportunity for people to have kind of that access to the waterfront. So this is just one idea. We know that there are some concerns about a boardwalk and pier going out into the lake. So we'll be talking with the community about that on Wednesday. But the idea is to really begin to draw some interest and change a bit of the character on State Road 674. We know that this road presents a problem for people to cross the street and to feel safe walking on. And so by creating some of these other elements, mid-block crosswalks and other crosswalks, we can hopefully change a bit of the nature of 674 utilizing some of this rural character component. And this is a little bit about the agriculture and agri-hoods. And being able to really focus that within some of the areas of the WVR two. Land or access to capital. We have heard from the community, there's a big interest in a number of farm workers who would like to begin to start their own farms or manage them. So we think that this could be an opportunity for farming co-ops. This is something that could happen in conjunction with existing agricultural lands and development. And finding ways to to bridge, you know, between what is the heritage of the area where we see agriculture happening and to be able to utilize those areas that are still productive in agriculture while allowing other non-as productive agricultural lands to redevelop. So cultural capital and community, supporting neighborhood schools. We are looking at potential locations where within the regulating plan, we could see school going. And we've had initial conversations with the district about this. But again, these are just proposed in terms of areas that would be suitable in terms of size of footprint within new developments. Also based on what's currently been entitled. And also spreading them out enough that they're not right on top of each other. But looking at ways that they can connect via the circulation of the grid as well as the trail network so that students could easily walk and bike. And really beginning to look at all of these schools as neighborhood schools. Beginning with YMMA Elementary and Radek Elementary, which are both on and across from State Road 674. So the focus on State Road 674 safety, you'll see as we zoom in a little bit, is going to be really important in terms of the safety of walking and biking to schools. Sustainable local businesses. There's about 108 businesses that are active in YMMA right now. And so we really want to focus on this idea of the local business. Because of the benefits, you know, for every hundred dollars you spend at a local business, $68 will stay in the community. We think this is really important for this area in terms of being a self-sustaining community. Looking at the local character and being able to encourage entrepreneurship and finding ways to do that. Part of our recommendations will be to see how this area can further utilize the resources of the county's small business resources. And be able to really focus on that to revitalize the downtown. They have a number of community organizations and partnerships. This is really key. And these are going to be a lot of the players who are going to help really see the plan move forward in the future. They've already done a tremendous amount in getting it this far. And looking a little bit at downtown YMMA. One of the pieces we heard is they used to have a welcome sign and entry sign as you got to YMMA. It's no longer there. They'd like to have it back. And we thought that having something more substantial at the intersection of 674 and a new main street would be really beneficial. So again, this list here on the right is really going over, you know, the walkability, the mix of uses, connections to transit, the bike network, small businesses. Creating housing and mixed-use development that leverage the advantages of farms that are adjacent locations. So being able to put all those pieces together. This is the downtown master plan. We have designated three new stoplights on 674. And we're also reorienting Main Street. Right now, Main Street is 674. There's a number of issues with it being on 674 aside from the safety problems. But we also see a lot more opportunity by serving a north-south direction, creating a safe crossing at State Road 674 and being able to extend south into and further into the downtown area to connect to new development. So that way, the main street really does begin to span the the north and south stretch, the new and the old. A little bit of the programming. So looking at being able to have residential units over top of retail or businesses, healthcare facilities. And again, these are all just proposed in the vision plan to be able to give people some idea of what we were thinking. Incubator spaces for startup restaurants, a commercial kitchen that can be utilized for catering or for other small businesses. We have heard there's a great need for. And again, this will all require infrastructure improvements. Not just sidewalks and street lighting, which are really essential, but also sewer. We have heard and have mapped the lack of sewer connections in the downtown area. We do think this has been something that has impeded new commercial development. And it would be necessary to have that in terms of seeing new multifamily in the downtown. The community has expressed the want and need for a laundromat. There's a resident that had wanted to start one but wasn't able because he couldn't get the sewer hookups for it and code requires it. So again, here we are looking at Main Street. This is fourth. This is oriented with north to your left. Just so that we could fit it on the screen. We're looking at again, creating that high-profile intersection with the welcome sign and being able to really create a nice Main Street frontage that does take on a small town character with porch-like storefronts. Rendering of that. And then looking at State Road 674 at the Main Street connection. And showing you some additional entry markers and crossings. So really, again, focusing on the safety aspects with those crossings to really create a much more pedestrian-friendly environment in the downtown. We've created two paseos or passages. These are passageways that exist in the downtown area. They are existing rights of way that are closed to traffic, but we thought would be really great community gathering spaces. Pedestrian realm and really looking at that public realm aspect in downtown. They lack a lot of those those gathering spaces. And so this provides opportunities for more regular farmers markets as well as shortcuts for people to take while walking in downtown. This is a bit more of the formal, so the Paseo Central, which is within the government district of the downtown, near the post office. Where we would, you know, imagine there would be a clustering of civic use buildings. Maybe an HCC campus or some other public uses. And the YMMA Plaza del Sol, which is at the former train station along the Greenway Trail, which would be a much larger park and have a stage for presentations and music and gatherings. So strategic initiatives that we are working forward. And again, the plan isn't finished. We do have another open house. We'll be taking more feedback. But the focus on infrastructure, affordable housing, mobility, economic opportunity. In in our next steps, again, the additional community input, the completed market study and our completed community surveys. We have had some and we have more coming. So that, thank you, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Very, very interesting presentation. On this item, we also have no action. So we are not going to take any comments or any questions from the public at this time. I also have, this is going to come up at the end, and also do a reminder, brief reminder of when and how the public can provide input on this item. But for now, I will open it up to my fellow commissioners. If anyone has any questions or any comments on YMMA Village WVR two. Commissioner Powell in the queue. Before I recognize you there, Mr. Commissioner Powell, I did want to state to the rest of my commissioners who are out there, if anybody has any questions or is feels nervous about asking anything, please know that this is the context for any sort of question you might have, even if you're unsure of something or you felt you might not have read through something here. This meeting that we're having today was, you know, requested by myself to deal with the issues that we're going to have going forward with this WVR two thing. When we start to get into the bottom of this, and correct me if I'm wrong, Melissa, I believe what we're trying to do here is revise the future land use element. We're trying to revise land design code. And we're also trying to revise a community plan. So that's three things all at once. Okay, so it's a very big piece of information coming by you here. So doesn't matter what the question is, now's the time to get it in there and ask it. So I treat you all to please, if you have any questions. Do join Commissioner Powell and whoever's going to come up next in the queue, please provide your questions and comments. Commissioner Powell, please.
Thank you. I'm actually going to turn my camera off because my my tiny little terrorists just came home. So I don't want them guarding in here. I apologize for that. But great presentation. A few things that were a little, you know, concerning to me and just like some clarification on them. Why are we not recommending any change, you know, to the gross density? When I think like the RP two consultants or work committee and increased, you know, up to like four dwelling units per acre.
So we are looking at offering it as an incentive for the affordable and workforce housing piece. We've talked to a number of the developers who are interested in the affordable and workforce housing. So we're looking at creating. Right now, it's proposed at a 20% density bonus for the affordable and workforce housing in the WVR two. So looking at the percentage of required open space and also looking at the clustering ratios. There's a balance as to how much density we can get and still be able to meet the open space requirement as well as clustering within a given space. And so we're using that density bonus as an incentive as opposed to just increasing density.
Okay. You know, on that, it was actually, you brought up affordable housing. It was actually a question I have. I I thought it was only a 10% density bonus. So you're getting like 0.2 units. Maybe I misunderstood, but even then that doesn't seem like a very significant, you know, density bonus there for, you know, affordable housing commitments. Like you said that you've talked with, you know, developers, but I'm curious, you know, to what's their feedback on whether or not, you know, that's actually really going to be enough to incentivize them.
Yeah, so we've been waiting to get back in touch with them in terms of understanding their balance of numbers and what they're looking at in this area. Again, in the WVR two, that we want to see certain densities increase and we want to see clustering increase. And we do want to see workforce and affordable housing. We definitely want to encourage that workforce and affordable housing and the bigger densities to go into the downtown. So the more we can focus on getting the densities within the urban service boundary, we think that that's going to strengthen YMMA overall. And again, to be able to preserve as much of the rural land or agricultural land that could remain as open space within the WVR two. But yes, there's going to be a magic number in terms of what the incentive offers and what's going to be enticing enough to build to that incentive. So we have to work through that math. And so that's where we are right now.
Okay. And I also am on the Affordable Housing Board. So I don't believe that you all have came to our to that board at all to to ask about, you know, density bonuses and get any input. But is there any, anything on your horizon where you're you plan on, you know, doing that? Because I mean, that's actually a really great board of of people and chaired by, you know, Commissioner Oberman. And so I think that if not, it would be something be great for you all to, you know, to put on your radar to, you know, maybe stop in and, you know, get some feedback from, you know, some of the other folks that are on the board and who are, you know, more actively involved and, you know, in that sector. But another question I had is
Yeah, so that's a great suggestion. And yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. The trying to make a note here on the the jobs.
No, I was just going to say. The jobs requirement. So right now, the jobs requirement is being reviewed. We've been waiting for the final market study to come back so that we have a better understanding of numbers. There are 11 jobs for every 100 residents in YMMA compared to the counties. It's a really low percentage. Looking at the types of of jobs and again, the focus on small business and what small business can do for this area is going to be a significant factor. The initial market study was showing a decrease in the number of agricultural jobs in the past 10 years. And so looking at that decrease and looking at how we begin to transition to different types of jobs will be will be a key component. The other part is also looking at the required commercial square footage and if that meets today's standards. So we know the numbers are not really working out correctly. And so based on the market study, we'll be able to have a better determination about what that commercial square footage requirement might look like.
Okay. Good, because I maybe it said this in one of your slides and but the the jobs requirement. To me, it's been like quite controversial, but are are jobs going to have to be created before, you know, housing? You know, is in place or, you know, because to me, it's been like kind of cart before the horse kind of thing, but you know.
So per the existing requirement, there is a there is a jobs requirement in order to be able to build the housing. So you're supposed to have 1.5 jobs basically per unit right now. And that is based on there being, I think, 2.7 persons per household. The persons per household, though, is now 4.2. So that jobs requirement would go up significantly based on that math. So we don't know yet what that looks like until we get a chance to review the final market study. But yes, right now, there's the requirement of both jobs and commercial square footage to be existing before the housing is approved.
Okay. So on that line of thinking, how does so much additional, you know, regulation support economic development? I mean, how are like the small business owners going to be able to, you know, really make it out there if people are not there?
Well, and that's again, why that particular section segment is like is under review. So we're I can go back to one of the slides, but and the we're looking at alternatives to that. So whether it be a contribution from the developers or something in lieu of that requirement. Or something in lieu of that requirement, we're trying to find what makes the most sense in terms of, again, being able to revitalize the downtown and to support local businesses. And local business development in that area and be able to have enough rooftops to do it. So typical rule of thumb is we're going to need 1 to 2,000 rooftops to support about a block of Main Street. So you're right, we do need the right mix and number of housing units and rooftops to support the Main Street that we're proposing. There's about. You know, I I think we're at about six blocks total. So, you know, we have just under 3,000 or so in the walkable area. You know, when we're looking at existing entitlements, we're beginning to get there. And so but finding that mix is going to be really important.
Okay, and my last question is actually more for Melissa. Why was the RP two study able to stay? Like relatively concise and limited and the exchange to me was, you know, is more regulation for an extra two units per acre. But with the WR study, what they're proposing is it seems to me a lot of regulation. And but in, you know, exchange landowners are not getting any additional density. So I'm just curious why, you know, a similar approach, you know, isn't being considered for the. WVR to land since, you know, the RP two was, you know, originally, you know, put in. As a my understanding anyways, and going back, it was put in, you know, to make that area more easier to develop.
So I think what you're seeing here is that. That Taryn and her team have done the land development code simultaneous with the plan language. And the the Kimberly Horn and Jared's team took a different approach where they have done the plan language. And are going to ask for buy-in on that, and then they're going to write the land development code. So. So I think ultimately, we're going to end up with fairly similar packages. But it's just you're seeing all the pieces. Simultaneously in in Taryn's presentation, whereas. Jared's approach will be that they're going to have to write some some code after they get the input later this week from the community. So I think it's just it's just a different approach and how the consultants have taken. I I think that quite honestly, neither the RP two nor the Wyoma Village two. Probably were ever really intended at their inception to be easy to develop. I think quite honestly, in their in the original construction of art, originally, all of this was RP two, including the Wyoma. And it was it was constructed to be difficult and for years. I mean, when I first started here almost 20 years ago, nobody was developing an RP two or in Wyoma. And there was a reason for that because there are a number of them. One being that it was it wasn't easy. There were a lot of requirements on it. Others being that the infrastructure wasn't in place and that there wasn't really a real estate market at the time. Now, South County is booming. And we're seeing a lot of pressure on this area and we're seeing as I think through both of the presentations that the infrastructure hasn't kept up. And so that is the crux of a lot of a lot of the issues. Some of the areas, particularly in the RP two. Have seen more approved development. And so that's one of the reasons why, particularly in the north area of RP two. There's some idea to continue. That pattern because it's 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 more established there, whereas in the Wyoma Village residential area. It's still there've been a couple of rezonings that were approved, but much of it is still agricultural. And so it's really just. Coming in to starting to transition to something else. So I think some of it has to do with just the different, the different geographies, the different areas, the different folks who spoke out in the community meetings.
Okay, and then my last question for you. In our last meeting, there was a proposed. Tax amendment that was going to be sunsetting entitlements, you know, after five years. And Taryn brought up, like, the commercial requirements. So has that tax amendment? Has any of the consultants even seen that or been apprised of it? Because I was thinking about, actually, last night, it was like, well, what happens if, you know, in, you know, let's say in the WVR two where someone goes in for, you know, 300 acres and. They're going to do, you know, the housing and they're going to do, you know, like a master plan. You know, a commercial district, but maybe, you know, it could take depending on the real estate cycle, you know, it that commercial may not be ready for development. You know, for say seven or even 10 years, but now we've put in, you know, to the code that, you know, you've got to build on something, you know, within five years and then all of those approvals, you know, are going to go away. So. Will that will that kind of get carved out if you're in the WVR two? Have we thought about that or?
I think it's a great question and one that I would want to circle back with Development Services about to make sure that. My understanding of what they're proposing is is accurate and. In how it would impact that. I think there are certain points that if you've done. A certain amount of development, then then that sunsetting doesn't come into play, but but I I. I would like to circle back with them, make sure I'm I'm accurate in it.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, sure.
Is that all Commissioner Powell? All right, Commissioner Dix, let's see, on there, he go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate your recognize me. It was a nice presentation and actually my question or our observation is really kind of a follow up to the very last thing that Commissioner Powell was referring to, and that is timing. The presentation is lovely. I mean, the graphics were beautiful, the downtown, the little village. I mean, it just looked wonderful. And Melissa, I respect greatly what you're talking about about there's, you know, demand that is reaching down in Wyoma, but Wyoma is still so very, very rural. What are we telling people, particularly the stakeholders, particularly when you go out there? Taryn, I know you had made reference to going out and talking to the residents and and getting their feedback and and input. What are you telling them as far as the timetable of when something like what you have drawn might actually appear?
So timetable wise, I we haven't gone into it just yet because just. As a result of not finishing the plan yet, once we get through our recommendations, we'll have a bit of a idea of phasing at that point, but typically. This would take a few years, right? It's going to take five years, 10 years, maybe 15 years, and it just part of it will depend on. You know, the infrastructure. So the infrastructure that we're looking at and talking about is within the urban service boundary. This is infrastructure that would have to find its way into community improvement plans for the county. And be in those different five-year funding cycles. And so, you know, or find other alternative sources to be able to pay for funding. So there are certain types of grants and things like that. The Community Development Block Grant might be an option for this area. In terms of some of these improvements, but the planning, the engineering all takes time, but again, those funding cycles will take time as well. So it's not going to happen overnight, but I do think there are some interim steps that we might be able to recommend. To take advantage of maybe some of the flex zoning that already exists. And be able to give people kind of steps in the process, right? What do we do in the interim before we get to the pretty picture in the end? And I think that that's going to be an important step. I think that there are certain bike networks that can be laid out, right? Paint tends to be cheap. We can make that happen most likely in a shorter amount of time. So I think that there are some interim recommendations that we can give. To help get us that closer step by step and to show momentum to that community that things are happening. They have a number of organizations that are very committed to seeing these processes through, and I think that's going to be important for them because they're going to need those. People to come and speak to the plan in order to get the funding from the county and make sure that they're being prioritized. It's an area that's definitely not been prioritized for a long time and not seen those infrastructure improvements for quite a while. So. You know, and when you look at the makeup of the community, right, like a laundromat seems like a very simple thing. And that community is really desperate to have one, but they can't.
I I really respect what you're saying. And I liked your line of paint is cheap, but I will caution you that. Digital pixels on a PowerPoint are even cheaper. And I say that to you with great respect. Because, you know, I can I can draw a comparable, for example, to Plant City's Midtown Project, which has been on the boards now for 15 years. And it's really not come to fruition. And I I don't want two things. I don't want, number one, to to cause people in Wyoma to be. Thinking that what they're looking at has a potential of coming true very, very quickly. And number two, I don't want us to be so rigid in trying to develop a very pretty plan so that it stifles growth. That the market may want to bring there. The market itself will drive a lot of those forces and granted, we need to put up. You know, kind of, kind of a curbing along the sideline so that growth doesn't go rampant. And we need to plan, but I don't want this to overplan. And that's just simply an observation for recognizing that some of the things that we draw up. Don't ever really become to reality and people get frustrated when that happens.
Sure, and this is this is meant to be a vision plan, so it is meant to be something that we want to try to aspire to. The codes that we've set up are. Not they're they're really intended to be able to encourage the Main Street development, to bring. Housing and to bring storefronts to the edges and looking at ways that we can begin to encourage that. It won't be an overnight turnaround. No vision plan is.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dix, for your comments. Were any other commissioners looking to ask any questions, make any comments? Anyone? King you there, Melissa? All right, I see Commissioner Green popped up. Commissioner Green, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Taryn. Good, good, good presentation. I I think now I understand the the village part of this, this 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 effort. The the thing, I I wanted to follow up on on something both Commissioner Powell and Commissioner Dix were talking about and. Or alluding to, and that has to do with. Visualizing what these conditions might look like. And at the end of the previous presentation, I was going to ask the same thing. Because I'm I'm hoping that that either that that effort or this effort will will show more scenarios of what, you know, what what what? What density, different densities would look like here in the downtown area, let's say, based on the type of development patterns that exist or. Or or that may evolve, let's say, as as part of a long-term phasing effort, Taryn, that you were that you were just alluding to. But but showing, you know, showing. Some of these these conditions so people can understand, oh, that so that's what. On units would look like on this big a piece of property or, you know, or or this smaller piece of property, let's say. The approach that you use with the, you know, with the with the with the village makes a lot of sense. Of course, like the. The graphics that 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 start to suggest, okay, this is the form that this village should should ultimately sort of evolve into. Which I think is good, that I think certainly helps, but but other portions of this, I think probably a lot more just. Scenario modeling, if I can, that, you know, use that term to describe, you know, what something could look like. Five years from now, you know, 10 years from now, let's say, and then factor in a lot of those variables, you know, when when this. Component of infrastructure would, you know, might materialize, when the market for it to support some of the commercial uses that. Or more of the commercial uses, maybe that and affordable housing that Commissioner Powell was was alluded to earlier. I think that would help quite a bit. And then my 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 last point has to do with, and maybe I missed this, but. I'm trying to understand that, you know, the the for 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 Main Street itself. 674 is right now, that's that's the main thoroughfare going through through this area and. And more than likely, it will probably be upgraded at some point in the in the future. So so reorienting the, you know, the the. Main Street, let's say, for that reason alone, I can I can understand, but there are other reasons for.
I'm sorry, say that one more time. There's other reasons to do what?
Now for orienting the Main Street north, north to south.
Yeah, so are you? Do you want me to just go through our reasoning for orienting it north to south?
Yes.
So we expanded Main Street. So Main Street was just that little tiny block of a street network in a rectangle along. 674. We've expanded it to include more areas so that way we could connect into new development better and also to be able to encourage. More density to happen within the urban service boundary by expanding that downtown. So that way, we're we're trying to push and encourage that density and growth to happen within urban service. So by orienting Main Street north, south, and we have a little part of it that includes 674 where there's existing local businesses that have been there for a long time. But not knowing exactly what will happen in the future, we're hoping the community plan provides some direction to FDOT about. What the community hopes 674 looks like in the future. You know, six lanes may not be right, especially if the community is really focused on children being able to walk and bike to school. And two elementary schools actually sit right on 674. So and one in particular, which is Wyoma Elementary. So that component of 674 is really. Going to probably fluctuate and change to some degree. We wanted to make sure Main Street had a bit more of a constant. By putting it in a north-south direction and also looking at where there was opportunities for development and redevelopment to happen to support that Main Street. Made sense along that fourth street corridor that we selected. And again, being able to use that Main Street in that north-south orientation to focus on the intersection of Fourth and 674 to give. A safe crossing with a light right there, not only because it's Main Street, but also because that's right where Wyoma Elementary is.
Okay. Okay, fine, good. Thank you. I guess the. The other, my other question had to do with any. What what type of of rural design strategies or principles, let's say, you're incorporating in, you know, into the into the downtown area? And 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 so. How, you know, how do you sort of introduce them to, you know, to the community and the, you know, in the workshops and the charrette, let's say? So that they understood that these are, you know, these are strategies specifically for this this type of area. Versus suburban or or an urban, more urbanized area, let's say.
So one of the things that we heard most from the community, they they talked a lot about their history. But what we found out is that it wasn't so much that there is this deep-rooted history in Wyoma. There is some. But it's not, it it's within their people. It's not necessarily. It's not necessarily within their built environment. And so one of the things that we focus on understanding is when they were talking about history, a lot of them were reminiscing about a time where the community was really a complete community. And they could go to a grocery store and they could go to the barber and they could, uh, do everything that they needed to do right within their community without having to leave Wy Mama. And so this was something that they were really missing. And they felt like things really changed when they lost the grocery store and the high school was closed or moved. And these were, um, things that really spurred that, when the train line was shut down. And so they were looking for ways to bring back that complete community. Um, and part of what they remember was just that it was, eh, part of its small-town feel were because of its people. Its local businesses, the people who own the businesses lived in Wy Mama. And so this was part of what helped create the character to them. And so some of the things that we're trying to do again is maintaining that scale. Um, and even though we're adding density, being able to maintain a right-sized scale in the downtown so that it doesn't feel, um, too big, too crowded, too tall. And also looking at creating things like, um, porch fronts and overhangs. So that, again, we're making, uh, a connection to the, the rural nature of sitting on front porches and having that as something along Main Street. But also as a design mechanism to help create shaded places on Main Street so that it's more comfortable for people who are walking along it. Um, and we know that that's an important factor to them. Um, they do have a number of trees in the downtown, being able to, you know, maintain. Um, that is going to be an important aspect to them. Um, other components too, that I, that I didn't show in here, the, our big plan document, which is much more voluminous than this, um, also has and, um, will have additional components for low-impact design. So we're really looking at handling water management in natural ways in this area, um, for two reasons. One, because we do feel it is important to the rural character to be able to manage it that way and bring in, uh, more green and, and plants, um, and that natural resource to the water management, but also because of the lack of sewer. So, um, and not knowing when that infrastructure will be in place. Um, if street improvements happen before sewer happens, we want there to be mechanisms that could be utilized to really help, you know, promote, um, these items.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Oh, one last point I wanted to make about one of the maps you showed early on, Taren, the, um, your regulating plan. Um, uh, I, I think you need to zoom in a little bit closer, um, uh, for that, for that particular one, especially um, for the, the downtown core itself, let's say. So a little bit too far, far out and, 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 um, really didn't, didn't, didn't tell us, tell us much.
Yeah, it's hard to see it on there. I, I agree, Trent. So, um, we actually, in the land development, we have it separated out where, um, in the WVR, you can see the WVR component in the, and then for the downtown one, we zoom in much closer so that you can see it better. But yeah, it, it is hard to read in this presentation.
Okay. And, and maybe this is a question for Executive Director. Um, so Melissa, a, a, a lot of what, um, what's shown in the, uh, in the plan um, has to do with small-scale, multi-use buildings. And, um, um, and I'm assuming, um, all, you know, those types of, of, of buildings are, are permitted, you know, in, in the, uh, in this, um, uh, land use designation currently, or would they have to be? I mean, would that be, um, another type of designation, let's say, to allow, allow those, uh, those, those small multi-use buildings?
I think for most of the downtown, the land use categories would allow this type of development. Um, that being said, it also would allow a more suburban style of form of, of, of non-residential development as well. So I think that's where the land development code, giving some structure to a different form, is very important.
Okay. All right. Good. Okay, that, that's, that's all I have. Uh, other than the fact that, um, the whole while, um, I've, I've been, been on the call. Um, Melissa, I've been, I've enjoyed your, 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 your twinking halo over, over your head.
Tried a lot of different angles trying to get that not work. And yes, I don't know.
Well, it certainly sends a, 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 you know, a, a message. Good. Okay, thank you.
Uh, is there anyone else? Any comments from anyone else, the other commissioners? I think I saw Commissioner Thrower's mic on. I didn't know if he wanted to make the comments or
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll turn it off.
Open mic. All right. Um, I did have a couple of comments on this one, um, obviously, actually a litany of comments. But I'm going to try and keep them to a minimum because this is, this is an immense body of work. Um, I don't have any direct comments really for you, Ms. Sabia. I think the work that you've done in kind of pulling all these cats together and presenting it here before us is, you know, just in and of itself, an incredible amount of work. And you should be commended for just that, all right? Because obviously, these, all these areas aren't yours. There's land development code that you're putting here before us. There's, you know, design elements that you're putting here before us, you know, there's policy that you're putting here before us, and you're answering for a lot of other people's work. So I'm not going to direct anything towards you, and I don't think I would necessarily need you to answer any of my questions. But I would just like to bring up a couple of points to Ms. Torinida and also to the team listening. Um, this WVR two, it's a big, it's a big package. And I think because it's a big package, there's some things that are getting mixed up in it. Um, there's certain areas, I'll just start off by talking about the community plan revision, which I guess the PowerPoint kind of represents largely the coalescence of all of it. The community plan revision, I think, has certain elements, if this is to become the community plan revision, that might not want to live in the community plan revision, where regulating things very particularly like floor-to-floor ceiling heights on buildings downtown. And while these things are, you know, regulated by building codes and probably won't change for a while, if they do happen to change in the interim between now and the next time we update the community plan, which we admit doesn't happen very often, it's going to put us in contradiction with not only building codes, but probably land development codes, okay? So not only the building code stuff, but I would like to see the land development code stuff, especially specific numbers and designations in the land development code. We can refer to these things by reference, and I think that's probably a better way to do it on our side, right? Um, so when it comes to the community plan, you know, echoing what Commissioner Dick said, I think we'd better off leaving things a little more squishy so that they can develop it a little bit faster of a pace than maybe a flu or a land development code. Um, as far as the flu goes, um, I think we did a good job with the policy. Um, I echo the same sentiments that I do about the community plan. I think in certain places in our, in our policy, we begin to get a little too regulatory. And I understand why. We have everything on the table in front of us. And when you have this much stuff on the table, you can ti- kind of tend to get things a little bit mixed up. Um, but I think there's some areas where we start to prescribe some things in, in detail that maybe would be better referenced again, just putting a reference back to the land development code as opposed to getting it into our documents. So I just wanted you guys to be cognizant as you go through of making that distinction, right? We're doing policy when we're talking about land use and the, and the, and the planning agency. We're doing regulation and development code when we're talking about land development. Um, I'd like to see a clearer distinction between those areas. And you know, again, that doesn't mean that things are done in silos. You can reference. You can say, okay, you know, line item this in the land development code, line item that in the flu, without necessarily copying diagrams and documents over. Um, now for the land development code, which is probably the brunt of my criticism and which is ironically the least of my purview here, right? Because land development is handled by the development agency. But I would like to send a message out to the, you know, the Hillsborough County Development Agency. I think this is an opportunity for them to, um, really put some claws on the development that's going to go on down here. Now, obviously, they have their own hurdles to deal with when it comes to having those claws actually meet the road. Um, and I won't speak to those things. But I think, um, when I read through the land development code section of this, right? I look at the community plan, Ms. Sabia showed here a lot of it, you know, it kind of coalesced everything and it looks great. There's all these ideas, kind of, all my fellow commissioners spoke about, all these great ideas. And then as soon as I look at the land development code, which, you know, regulation tends to be, it's kind of this boilerplate document that, you know, could, could live out one way, could live out another way. Um, again, that's not my fight. I don't have a dog in it. But I would like to see land development take some stronger steps, um, when it comes to, I don't know. Speaking about things like Ms. Sabia mentioned, low-impact development, right? We talk about that in the community plan. We talk about it on our, on, on, on our, uh, policy side. I don't know that I've seen it thus far, met it out that well in the land development code changes. Um, maybe that will follow with the one water policy, which was mentioned in this document. And I thought that was a great mention also, bringing in the one water policy. Maybe those are things that are going to come down the line when that happens. But I think it's an opportunity to really try and, and, you know, help out the community. Help, help them really see what, help them really achieve their vision that they want to see through the regulatory structures we put in on construction and zoning. You know what I mean? So I, I just wanted to make that message to the development, uh, department. Um, and also our department, you know, where it comes to policy and, and the community planning. Um, other than that, I did want to say, I think the work done thus far is excellent, not just Ms. Sabia, but obviously all the people and parts who went into doing all the pieces that got put into this presentation today. This is an immense amount of work, and I'm not sure everybody understands what's going on here. But this is a huge body of work, you know? I want to commend this group and also the group before with the RP two on their outreach to the community. I'm one of those crazy people who, the reason why I know this such a huge amount of work because I've read through every page of every document, having to deal with both of them. I've gone on the websites. I've watched every video of every presentation of community outreach you guys have done. And you guys have done a really excellent job. You know, I can, just by watching the videos and looking at what the consultants have pulled out of what they've spoken to the community about, I can really start to see the community, you know, trying to, trying to shape the vision for what the future of the place is going to be. And not just that, I think you guys do a good job of taking that information and making some sense of it going forward. Um, lastly, I wanted to say, as concerns making sense, uh, I did think there's a little cloudiness, and I don't know whose, it's probably development services area. Um, some terms like clustering, I think we're real loose with the terms clustering, urban, suburban. Rural is pretty much defined, but urban, suburban and clustering, right? And probably villages, I would throw in there too, as Commissioner Green, you know, echoed earlier. They're real gray areas. And to me, those are the areas where we lose these things, right? Those are the areas where the people who want to take advantage, get in there and can take advantage because we leave just this, this kind of nebulous area. So I, and I don't know if it's possible, again, obviously, every department has their own directives and things they deal with. But I would like to see a little bit more clarity in clustering. What does that mean? You know, when we use it here, what are we saying? When we say suburban, what are we, what does that mean? And I think that, again, speaks to Commissioner Green's mention of, of forms. What, what do the forms, what does this thing look like? You know, what does it feel like? And I'll, I have a lot more than that, but I'll just, I'll cut it off there because I know we will be here all night, so.
Well, if, if I could, one, I would love to get all your detailed comments.
I'll email it, yeah.
Right. Um, and then, um, I, I would just comment that I think the, quite honestly, both of these categories kind of muddy that urban, suburban water in how they were originally constructed. Um, uh, to some degree, that two-unit-per-acre density was put out there as something that could be served by urban-level services is, um, to some degree, uh, contrary to other parts of the comprehensive plan where we say you have to have four units per acre to get urban services in the urban service area. So, um, so they kind of started to muddy that water. And, um, I think that's a great point, that it would be, this is a good opportunity to, as we look at refreshing that, to better articulate what we mean as it relates to these areas. But, but maybe it also helps uncloud the water for the, for the broader comprehensive plan. Um, I know in one of the RP two work sessions we had recently, we had a whole discussion about clustering and whether or not, um, because it's, it's almost gotten a bad, um, connotation with the community because the form of that clustered development that they've seen has been, um, not particularly distinct from what they see in other parts of South County. It, it all looks the same to them, forty-foot-wide lots with a suburban style of development. And so they're not seeing the benefits of clustering that could come with the additional open space and other things. So we were almost thinking, do we need to rebrand this? So because it, it's, but, um, but clustering is what it is supposed to be. But we need to better de-define it perhaps. So, great points. Thank you.
All right. Were there, we'll open it up to any other, or Ms. Sabia, did you want to say anything? I know I set a mouthful here, and this is obviously all your, your baby right here, your work. So if you wanted to say anything, um.
Um, so first, it's not my baby. This is the community's baby.
There you go.
They feel that way about it, right?
Right.
Um, so thank you, though, for your comments about the amount of work. It, you know, it, it is, and, um, the, the big document, uh, in the end, will be quite large. Um, you know, and how we structure in terms of, uh, keeping, you know, certain elements within the land development code and, or versus the community plan, um, I think we'll have some conversations about. Um, and the conversation, and the, the piece about having the low-impact development included in the, in the LBC um, is something we can certainly look at because, uh, I think that those are important elements. And it's definitely a way to be able to, uh, both manage, uh, stormwater in a natural way, uh, but also, um, you know, work with that rural landscape and the rural environment a bit. So I think it, it's a good bridge, and if that's something that we can work in, then that's going to be a benefit.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation. All right. Any more comments from commissioners? Going once, going twice? Oh. Commissioner Green. Please, go ahead.
Um, uh, one last comment, and I, I, I won't, um, uh, um, uh, believe with this, this point. I, I brought it up before. Um, but I, 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 I do think that, uh, and, and I think this is, this is, this is the, um, a perfect opportunity to, 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 uh, to use, um, visualization, let's say, in such a way that it helps people um, um, interpret, you know, these, these, you know, these numbers and, 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 um, land use um, um, uh, references like that. Um, so, so the average person can understand it. Um, I think a lot of times, the, you know, the general public, they, they, they just, you know, I'm, I'm not sure if they're on the same page with us because we're, you know, we're, you know, we're, we're talking in one, in one language, language and, and, and I don't think they're, they're all that, that familiar with it. But if you show them a picture, if you show them something and say, okay, this is what these numbers represent, what this, you know, th- this actually means. Um, I, I think we'll have a much, much easier time in terms of, you know, helping, helping people just, just sort of get on, you know, get on the same page, let's say, and really, really understand what, what it is, what it is we're talking about and understand the implications. And then I think they'll be better able to say, yes, I like it, no, I don't, or, or, or is there a better way or, or whatever. Uh, but, um, uh, but, you know, I, I, I could make that, that point while, while I'm on the, while I'm on the board because I think it's, I think it's tremendously important, especially now that, um, um, growth and development, uh, is, is almost always, uh, well, I should say always, controversial. And, um, there's some people who understand it, uh, maybe a few, uh, but there are a lot of people who don't. And, uh, I think we have to, we have to sort of u- use the tools that are available to, to us to, to sort of level the pool, so to speak. Okay? And, um, um, uh, you know, uh, I also use the term scenario modeling. you know, I also used the term scenario modeling earlier and, and, and again, I think those are ways to help understand what, what some of these issues might be. And, and, and I, I know I heard Taryn say they haven't really gotten to the phasing yet for, you know, for, for the, for the village, for the village plan. But, but I think that would be tremendously helpful because Commissioner Dix was, was absolutely right. A, a lot of times things don't come to as, as planned. So, so to help people better understand that they're, you know, they're going to be phases or they're going to be interim conditions before you get to that end state, that everybody's sort of, you know, hoping for, wanting, okay? But I just think these are, you know, this is another, another way for us to, to sort of connect much better with, with, with the general public.
So Commissioner Green, if you look in the, the full presentation that, that you have, I didn't show it in this one, but it is in the full one. We do have a slide that has example images of different zonings. So different housing units per acre or units per acre is on there. It is something though that if you think is helpful, we could expand what we've shown, but we, we do have a little example of what the different densities look like. But we haven't done.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, I think that would be tremendously helpful and, and, and also to, to, to be able to say, okay, well, here's what, here's what, you know, two dwelling units per acre would look like, okay? In terms of form, you know, or physical conditions or portion of it, let's say. And, and relate that to, let, let's say some of the other conditions that are in the, in the plan, like, like some of the commercial, commercial, commercial development that, that you're showing in the downtown, Taryn, because we know that that lower density, of course, by, by itself, you know, won't, won't support a, a lot of those commercial, commercial uses. So, so maybe that's a way to sort of help get you to the point of, 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 of of showing people how, you know, how clustering really really matters or transfer development rights, of course, if, if, if that, you know, we can get that to, that to work out. And here's why, here's why we're doing it. To get to a certain level of density in a particular area to, you know, to, to be able to support those types of, those types of, of, of the uses. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green. Alright, anyone else who has any comments, commissioners, any more questions? No? Alright, then I will thank you for your time, Ms. Sabia, again, excellent presentation. And I believe that's it, you don't have anybody there with any comments or anything, Melissa? Oh, Ms. Gonzalez, if you could, one more time, yes, there you go, there she is, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, so to remind everyone, the Wy Mama virtual work session is going to be this Wednesday, June seventeenth from six PM to seven thirty PM. And we ask that anyone who wants to participate to please register. You can do that on the Planning Commission website through our calendar, or you can also visit the Wy Mama project page and you can register there as well.
Alright, thank you very much, ma'am. And I would like to thank all of you and my fellow commissioners for their time and this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you so much.